Congress is back in session. The motion pending for Congress is to pass it or to defer CB number 21-134 to Monday's calendar. Discussion?
Speaker.
Chairman Gollan, you have the floor.
Speaker, we don't discuss motions to defer.
Speaker, the action on the motion from my good chairman of which and this, we should vote on the deferment on that bill.
Okay, the main motion now is CB 21-134, deferment to Monday's calendar. We will vote. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Aye!
Well, I heard, if it's according to what I heard, motion did not carry. Chairman Figueroa.
Can we vote for raising of hands?
The division is called for. So, short recess. Congress is back in session. We will vote on the deferment of CB 21-134 by a show of hands. All those in favor of deferring the said motion, please raise your hand. Chief Clerk, please count. All opposed, please raise your hand.
Speaker, what's your vote?
Okay, Chief Clerk, please announce the results. Short recess. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, please call the roll of yea votes.
Senator Aritos, Senator Christian. Yes. Senator Figuerre. Senator Gollant. Floor Leader Harper. Senator Conman. Vice Speaker, I mean Senator Neath. Senator Palick.
Yes.
Senator Perman.
No.
Senator Romlo. Senator Orsmann. Senator Welly. Speaker Semina is not here. Acting Speaker Moses.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, seven members voted in favor.
What's that?
Seven members voted for deferment.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. CB number 21-134 has also been deferred to Monday's calendar. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Lam, why are you smiling when the vote is carried?
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item, next bill.
There are no more bills, Mrs. Speaker. Next item, item 19, resolution calendar.
Any resolutions?
Speaker. Speaker, I have.
By Chairman Talik?
When we go back, I have two resolutions.
We're in session.
Oh, in session. Mr. Speaker, thank you. Move to withdraw and place on a resolution calendar for action the following resolutions: 21-85, 21-112, and 21-113. So move.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress place CR number 21-85, 21-112, and 21-113 on today's calendar. Any discussion? Rescess, Mr. Speaker. Short recess. Congress is back in session. The motion is to place CB, CR number 21-85, 112, and 113. So Chief Clerk, please read the titles of those bills.
Yeah, Mrs. Speaker, the first one, Congressional Resolution 21-85. This is declaring the call of the Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia to have the FSM Reach Universal Health Coverage by 2030, and calling upon the President to take measures to effectuate that goal. And 21-112, it's a resolution expressing sincere condolences and sadness of the 21st Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia to the People's Republic of China regarding the ongoing novel coronavirus epidemic which has claimed the lives of more than 400 individuals worldwide with tens of thousands of confirmed cases in over two dozen countries. And 113, resolution, it's expressing a sincere condolences and sadness of the 21st Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia to the family of late former Governor of Coochai State, Robert James Walbagger, and to the government and the people of the state of Coochai on his passing on January 26, 2020.
There you have the reading of the said bills for placement on today's calendar. Any discussion? If none, we will vote on the placement of CR number 21-185, 21-112, and 11-113. All those in favor of placement of those said bills, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried, CR number 21-185, 112, and 113 are placed on today's calendar for action. Let it be known for the record that all the relevant rules that made impede our action are still suspended. So Chief Clerk, first resolution.
Yeah, Mrs. Speaker, we have Congressional Resolution number 21-85 for adoption. CR number 21-85 is a resolution declaring the call of the Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia to have the FSM Reach Universal Health Coverage by 2030, and calling upon the President to take measures to effectuate that goal.
Chairman Perman. It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass CR number 21-85 or adopt Congressional Resolution number 21-185. Any discussion?
Speaker.
Floor Leader Harper, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I have nothing directly to the content of the resolution. I simply want to mention that that is one of the subjects that I mentioned in our speech in the APPF 28. Thank you all, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Floor Leader Harper. Any more discussion?
Speaker.
Chairman Orsmann, you have the floor.
Yeah, I really do support the intent of this resolution. I am, however, wish to note here or to raise my small concern that I hope this kind of resolution is not going to raise hope for our people that may not be possible. I know it's 2030, that a lot of things can happen then, including my absence from this earth. I know there are countries, including neighbors, that have attempted this, especially with regard to health insurance, for example, and they have not totally succeed. I thought an approach and nothing has prevented me except that I'm not as to result as before in this meeting the intent of this resolution. What I mean is maybe to start with our own retired national government employees, where we include them on some kind of coverage that they continue even after retirement from the government. They continue to receive some benefits from the government that they have served for many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Orsmann. Any more discussion?
Mrs. Speaker.
Vice Chairman Christian, you have the floor.
It's great to wait until they retire, but I think the better way, gentlemen, is to give them a raise while they are young and working because they would use that money for their children and drive their lives to a better path in the community. Rather than wait until they're old and cranky like me, I much rather have my support from government up front, and that can come in the form of an increase in their biweekly salaries. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Perman, Vice Chairman Christian noted. Any more discussion? If none, question has been called for. If there is no objection, we will vote on the said resolution. All those in favor of adopting CR number 21-85, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted Congressional Resolution number 21-85. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have a Congressional Resolution number 21-112. CR number 21-112 is a resolution expressing sincere condolences and sadness of the 21st Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia to the People's Republic of China regarding the ongoing novel coronavirus epidemic which has claimed the lives of more than 400 individuals worldwide with tens of thousands of confirmed cases in over two dozen countries.
So move, Mrs. Speaker. It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt Congressional Resolution number 21-112. Any discussion?
Speaker.
Floor Leader Harper, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Just out of curiosity, I want to ask whether the previous Congresses passed such resolution like this during the, what do you call that epidemic, SARS epidemic?
Chairman Perman care to venture an answer?
Well, I was not in what previous like 20 years ago, but short answer, no. According during our time.
Thank you, Floor Leader Harper. Any more discussion by Chairman Talik?
Thank you, Speaker. Minor correction on the paragraph on the heading 400. I would put 500, as of yesterday, 560 death. So we could.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. The pending motion is to adopt or to adopt resolution or resolution number 21-112. Any more discussion? So move. For its adoption. It's been moved and adopted. We're in discussion. If there are no more discussion, we will vote on the adoption of Congressional Resolution number 21-1112. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Congress has now adopted Congressional Resolution number 21-112. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB, I mean, Congressional Resolution number 21-113 for adoption. CR number 21-113. It's a resolution expressing sincere condolences and sadness of the 21st Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia to the family of late former Governor of Coochai State, Robert James Walbagger, and to the government and the people of the state of Coochai on his passing on January 26, 2020.
Chairman Welly, you have the floor.
So move for the basis of the said resolution.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number 21-113. Discussion? Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. I would like to recognize Chairman Welly.
Senator. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to defer action on the said resolution to a Monday session.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded that Congress defer Congressional Resolution number 21-113 to Monday's calendar. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congressional Resolution number 21-113 is deferred to Monday's calendar. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Speaker. Chairman Orsmann, you have the floor.
Colonel, I wish to try to on placing a withdrawing and placing a resolution on today's calendar for action.
Go ahead.
I move to withdraw and place, no, I just move to place, withdraw and place resolution, CR number 21-111 on today's calendar, resolution calendar for action.
It's been moved and seconded that CR number 21-111 be placed on today's calendar for action. Short recess. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Short recess. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. The motion pending is to withdraw and place CB, CR number twenty-one dash one-one-one. All those in favor of placing the said resolution, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. CR number twenty-one dash one-one-one is placed on today's calendar for action, and let it be noted that the relevant rules are still suspended. So Chairman Rusman, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move for the adoption of this said resolution.
It's moved and seconded that CR number twenty-one dash one-one-one be adopted by Congress. Discussion?
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, uh, Christian?
I would like to offer the following floor amendment to our resolution. Uh, first resolution on the, uh, first whereas on the resolution would read, and whereas the introducer of this resolution, the good Senator J.J. Rusmal, uh, went to school in Kansas City. It will bring some relevance to how this Congress is so much aware of the chief's, uh, achievement. Never mind, let's just vote on the resolution.
May I, may I ask, uh, where was the capital of Kansas City?
I.
Please address the floor when you're, uh, we're in session.
Short recess.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. There's a motion to pass CR number twenty, or CR twenty-one dash one-one-one. If there is no discussion, no objection, we will vote on adoption of CR number twenty-one dash one-one-one. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carried. CR number twenty-one dash one-one-one is adopt, has been adopted by Congress. Uh, Chief Clerk, next resolution?
There's none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Speaker.
Chairman Romolo, you have the floor.
Most of the Congress will stand in recess until Monday.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress stand in recess until ten AM Monday morning. If no objection, we shall vote on the said motion. All those in favor of Congress going to recess until Monday at ten AM, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress stands in recess until ten AM Monday morning.
So we meet members lounge right now. Speaker.